The Chaparral Central School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 7th, 2019. The Board of Education has been in executive session since 6 o'clock discussing real estate contracts, employment history of specific individual, litigation receiving legal advice. Could I have a motion to bring us into public session?
I move that we resume our public session.
Wait a second. I'll do it. Oh, time, 8 o'clock. Let's stand for the project pages. So the President of the Board, Jane Cheppelson, is not able to be here and will step in her place here. And is ready to go along and start with our President's Report. The President's Report, I will be adding two motions for a resolution to the agenda, 5.18. Be it resolved pursuant to the provision of educational law 3635p and Commissioners' Regulations at 17 NYCRR Part 191, the Board hereby determines that a roadway located on Mountain Peak Road does not meet the criteria for hazardous condition and therefore may not be designated as a child's age zone. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education will notify the parent who petitioned the Board regarding this matter of this determination. And we're just... And then 5.19, be it resolved pursuant to the Board of Education Policy 5053. After due deliberation, the Board is determined to uphold the grade level placement decision of the building principal with respect to student number 704908. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education will notify the parent who petitioned the Board regarding this matter of this determination. And we will move to motion to add them to the agenda. I, so I'm in motion to add those to the agenda. Would you have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion?
So we're not voting, I just want to clarify. We're not voting right now, but we're voting to add this to the agenda, we're not voting on the resolution.
Correct, they'll take those in their place in the agenda, yep.
After public comment.
Okay, so these two, these two resolutions will be placed after 5.17. Into the agenda. Thank you. And thank you for your patience. So all in favor of adding these resolutions to our agenda?
Holly, Jane, we asked you to mention?
Yes, I did. Oh, so actually, I will, let me get these in my paper. But Jane did ask me to let everybody know that we had received results from the safety survey, from the task force, and that we're looking forward to hearing Christine's recommendations and to thank everyone who participated in task force as well as the community with the survey. And also to say that we are really excited about some of the new bases that are going to be joining us as well as the new spaces that will be coming online. And Christine will be sending a communication to the community to let you know about what new spaces are coming and what to expect to see by video coming up soon. So I'm looking forward to opening it up.
Great. Thank you, Holly. So the Superintendent's Report tonight, we have a lot of required information that we need to present to the public. John will share with you our budget, tax levy, and tax rates. And I will be updating you on the safety task force recommendations and looking for your conceptual approval on some of the items that I will present to you tonight. After that is concluded, I will present the Code of Conduct and District Safety Plan in a hearing type format where I'll go over publicly the changes. They've been posted online and the meeting has been noticed in the newspaper. This is an opportunity for the public to hear what those changes are and to provide commentary before the Board discussion on August 29th and where you would have the two documents in front of you for adoption for the 1920 academic year. Part of that process also will be for the Policy Committee to meet prior to the 29th to review any of the comments that have been received by the Superintendent either before, during, or after the hearing process since the documents have been posted online. Okay? All right, so thank you, John.
Okay. And I actually have two presentations. The first one is regarding the tax rates because today is the day that the Board has to set the tax line. And so that's the first one. And the second one is that we presented a very short presentation regarding the multi-year financial plan. So this is the first one, this is the budget, tax levy, and tax rate. So we, you know, the budget was approved in May and the two towns has finalized their assessments. Because as you recall, in March, at the end of March and beginning of April, when we talk about the tax rates, they were all estimated tax rates. So now this is the final tax rate and this is the final tax warrant. So these are the, have, these are the numbers that we presented before. So I just wanted to remind everyone again, true budget is $126,152, $152,188. And the tax increase, tax levy increase is $126,022. And that represents 0.04% of tax levy increase. So now we want to introduce the two tax rates. One is for Newcastle, which is 0.65%, and Mont Pleasant is 1.63%. Interestingly enough, these two numbers are very, very, very close to our estimated rates. The reason is because since April to now, there was very few assessment challenges. So the numbers were pretty much finalized by March. So you see the change is like 0.01%, so it's minimal. But regardless, these are the final numbers. And this is the calculations. I just want to quick point out one thing is that this number, the assessed taxable valuation is different from what you're going to see in the tax warrant. The reason is because, only for Newcastle. The reason is because what here, what we put up here is for the portionment. This is what we had to do with calculation, we had to go through this process because chaparralizing the two taxing jurisdictions. So we need to allocate the taxes. We know, altogether, we need to collect $110 million. The question is, how much do you allocate? This is the full amount we had to collect. And then how much are we going to put in Newcastle, how much are we going to put in Mont Pleasant? That's why we had to go through this exercise. You had to use the assessed value and you had to use the equalization rates to get the numbers. So this is the way we allocate, so which we allocated here. When we went to calculate the tax rate, for Newcastle, we had to subtract out $1,500. So I just want to tell you, this is a mistake if we try to match up all the numbers. Because there's a clergy, clergy person living in the school district and there's exemption of $1,500. So that's what goes into it.
Where does that money come from then, John? Where do we get that money, John?
No, we don't get it money from, just that it's reduced and then everyone else is basically making a hole.
Okay.
Okay, so basically that $1,500 is allocated to all the other residents. That's really the bottom line. We are, we are, the two towns collectively didn't collect $110 million for us. So I think this, this table just give you some comparison. I think the good news here is that we see that this is the first time we see all the assessment numbers are even positive. So that means that assessed values are going up for the school district and very nice. So just wanted you to have this piece of information. And then basically, do you have any questions before we go to the next presentation? Yep, okay. And so the next one is multi-year financial plan. And you know, it's always a back, this is not required, but it's always a best practice. And especially the Controller's Office always encourage school districts to have multi-year financial plan, which we always do. And we always present just one slide in the budget preview. But this January, we didn't do it because, you know, we thought that this is the best time to, at the end of the year, actually go forward for the five years and then give an indication. And this is really not a blueprint for the school district, but rather is just give you some indication of what to expect for the next five years. So in order to prepare the five-year plan, we have a list of assumptions. You know, we are assuming for the next school year, we'll have the building aid increase by $800,000 a year. And we planned that when we had the construction done and we're thinking counting on this to reduce tax levy. You remember, we're not, you know, borrow $42.5 million and, you know, we're not increasing the tax levy to pay for the debt service. And part of it was to use building, building aid. And so that's, we're assuming that we're going to get $800,000 increase. And also when we don't indicate any very specific, very specific information, we use the five-year averaging, five budget increases. And then for next year, we are assuming that TRS's contribution is going to increase two percentage points. That's a very, very hefty number. We're not talking about 2%, we're talking about two percentage points. And that represent for us probably over a million dollars, just in the budget itself, we probably have to put that. And the reason is because, I see that there, the reason is because the market has not been performing well compared to five years ago. Whereas for TRS, we use five-year averaging. So you remember, five years ago, that number's going to drop off, which is a very, very high increase in the stock market. And the one that's going to be replacing it is a lower number. And therefore, someone has to make it up. And it's going to be all the public entities will be making up that number.
So how close do you think the 2% is to what's expected? Is that, I mean, it's obviously an estimate.
It's an estimate. We will note, we have an indication by the end of, the beginning of November, the end of October. And I think it's going up at least two percentage points. So that's larger than that. Because when you think about it, our TRS salary is over $50 million. And 2% of that is over a million dollars. So we need to anticipate that. And, but also when you really think about, if you look at the formula for the tax cap calculation, anything over two percentage points is subtracted out, this is schools. But that doesn't help, you haven't still have to make up for that two percentage point, which is $1 million that we had to find in the budget. But we're not the only ones facing it, right? All the school districts.
And, you know, I also like to know that you have to keep in mind the increase is not realistically two percentage points because it's percentage of the salary, the salary is increasing.
That's right.
So it's a lot more than 2% of what we're paying.
That's correct, that's correct. And also, you know, our contract, for TRS, really just two contracts. One is the CCT contract, one is the CAA contract, so teachers' contract and administration contract. And the teachers' contract is in, is in force. So next year is negotiated already, so we already know what the numbers will be. Whereas administration, we will be going into negotiations because that is going to expire at the end of this school year, June 30th, 2020, the contract will end. And then we will, assuming number five, general support, is going to increase by two percentage point, 2%. And debt service, we're not using estimates. If you exclude the leases, we are actually putting down the actual amounts rather than estimating numbers. And then number seven, restricted and unassigned amounts would increase by 1.5%. These are just our assumptions. And then here is the table of the years that will be approved or the actual numbers. Just, this is the starting base because in order to calculate the first year, we have to go back five years, right? So this is the starting point. Okay, and then here, I know the numbers are very small, but these are the numbers that, you know, these are on the website, you'll be able to see it. And so the crucial point is really these numbers. Whenever you see the negative numbers, these are the numbers that we're projecting that somehow we have to make it up in the future. So just indication, and I think it's also, thank you Christine. So these are the numbers and these are, you know, negatives. So somehow, we need to try to make up the numbers. Okay, so just an indication, and this is just a first look and just give you some indications. So we don't have to make any decisions now, but I think, I just want to raise these two questions because when we, it was 2010, when we were preparing the budget, we made a commitment at the time, started using reserve funds for compensated absences. So we are using up our reserve funds and we never budget for the compensated absences. Whereas in 2007, 2008, we were always budgeting for the compensated absences. So the question that administration, we're thinking about is that to prepare next year's budget, should we start budgeting for the compensated absences or should we continue to draw down the reserves? So that's the first question. And the second question is that should we begin to budget capital repair projects in the general fund? Do you, if you recall, before we hit a bond, we have $575,000 for interfund transfers. These are the, these are the things that we were repairing the roofs, we were repairing, making all kinds of repairs for the school districts. Because you know, other than now, other than seven bridges, all the buildings are aging and we need to repair. So because of the bond payments, we reduced it by $475,000. So right now, we're carrying $100,000. And we're concerned because yes, this capital project did break for us, but you know, things continue to deteriorate. And one thing that Joe and I, we have been talking about, we're really worried especially with structure roofs. And it needs to be replaced. So we're thinking that, you know, we need to start budgeting funds for the interfund transfer again. So these are the two questions. I think we will, I just want to make it public, you know, the entire Board needs to know. And what we'll do probably next step is that we'll work with the Facilities Committee and we'll talk about these two, actually the second item, and then we'll come back and maybe make a recommendation.
John, like by order of magnitude, how big is the compensated absence?
Okay, so we're talking about around, anywhere between $200,000 to $300,000. So I'll say average $250,000. And we did have a board resolution, I think in May, that we transfer money to these two loans to pay for. Compensated absence, I'll tell you what they are. Really is, really when someone is retiring or someone is leaving, these are the obligations that we have committed for example, unused vacation days or unused sick leave. These are the compensated absences. And then magnitude of the second item is at the height of the interfund transfer for capital is $575,000. Right now, we have $100,000. That's the magnitude.
We could still repair capital projects, is that...
We have, we have that too. And I think in my head for that, when we, when we first started that, one project that was, I was thinking about, we actually have to set money aside is really for the artificial turf dures. Because after 10 years or so, or 12 years, it depends on the usage, we have to have a major repair, replacement, replacement and repair. And I just want to make sure that in future generations, they have that money set aside for that use. Okay, and this is just for information. And with this school year, you have two major reports that we have to prepare. One is the transparency report that is due by the end of this month. So we're gearing up for this report. And what this report is, is the New York State answer to the second report, ESA, the ESA report. So the transparency report, the difference between these two reports is that the first one, the transparency report is reporting out budget. Whereas the ESA report, ESA stands for Every Student Seize Act. That's the replacement of the no child left behind. And that is a federal requirement, but each state sets their own report. So we haven't seen the report for New York State yet. And the purpose of these two reports are exactly the same. What they want to do is they, they want to see the people's cost. And they want to make sure that within a school district, you're not shortchanging a student, you know, from one school versus the other school. We only compare at the same level. So the reason we are set to do it this year is because we have more than one school and the middle school level and the elementary school level. For example, elementary school, school, we have three, and the middle school, we have two. And therefore, you can make a comparison. Whereas for example, I give you, I used, I was at Hastings. Hastings is not required to report a transparency report until next year because they only have one elementary school, one middle school, one high school. So there's just no way to compare to them.
State Ed is concerned that there are inequities across buildings in certain districts based on what kids live. So they're looking into this in a, in a very purposeful way by examining the resources allocated to each building.
This only came out about a year ago, right?
This is part of their, actually is their, is their region's focus? And so this is one of their pathways of examining equity in districts.
So the first report is for using the budget to report out. So what we are going to report out on August 31st of this year is actually the 1920 budget. So my office preparing the financial part and then Tony's office is preparing the staffing part. There are several components to this report. And then the ESA report is supposed to be due by the end of December, but because they haven't even put out a report, they haven't even finished preparing the reports. So the deadline is postponed until March 31st, 2020. So just, this is just information.
I just want to make a comment about the transparency report because there's a real fantasy there with the idea that the amount of money allocated is a real barometer of equity. Because you can have a building, not necessarily in this district, but in general, you can have a building, let's say with very new teachers, or maybe because of the new standards, maybe they're dual certified and they're placed in certain buildings because maybe they can provide the best support services, but because their new, their salaries are lower. So you can have a building that looks like it's receiving less, you know, it's receiving less money, but it's providing more equity in terms of other values to the students. So it's, it's a very misguided standard in a way. It just doesn't, it doesn't recognize that equity is measured in much more than dollar amounts. So I don't know where we're going to end up here because we have an inclusive district. So is that being a problem with other districts, but I don't know if we're going to run into that.
See, what I find happens often with State Ed is they tend to address issues and they apply broad strokes. And so what happens is when you are looking at singular issues that are legitimate in certain districts, they apply practices to rectify those issues and apply it to everybody and don't take into consideration the nuances of each district. So now we're in a situation where we're going to have a report due to State Ed as a result of maybe some practices in other places that may be questionable, which may call into some of our own practices, which are perfectly reasonable based on our current situation. But I think that that's the process that we've experienced from State Ed since we've all been a part of the system. Maybe part of that reason is they don't, they don't see feedback from districts.
Can you give me your perspective?
So we'll comply with the law based on, you know, any recommendations, we'll analyze them and move forward where we need to.
And the information will actually have to be made public and we have posted on our website as we find out if we work. That's it, any questions?
I have one question. The county just implemented a new tax, so it would increase the sales tax.
Sales tax, yes.
So do we know how much our allocations from that are going to be at schools? I've seen some numbers. Was there a big increase in your numbers?
Actually, starting August and going through the end of next year, next calendar year, we already have the numbers. So for us, if we have an entire calendar year, and actually already factor that into the long-term allocation, you'll see, you'll see the increase in the...
It's not that much though, is it, John?
Yeah, actually, it's about $430,000 actually in our school district. But that's a, you know, a large amount, it's pretty much double, not about, yeah, I think 50% of our probably tax. Right now, we will, we budget for I think $875 or $895, so $430 is about half of that. Anything else?
I guess on these two questions, I would just say that in terms of the capital projects and budgeting for that, I know that we've always placed a weight at once in this district on our facilities and recognizing that our facilities really impact students and obviously their environment and student learning. So Joe's always, Joe and the entire facility community's always been very good at long-term planning. And the previous budget was very important. I mean, we called it Joe's budget, right? And that that was very important in terms of the long-term planning and maintaining our facilities in really tip-top shape. So I think that we have talked about them after that, after the, you know, the...
Think about the aging facilities that we have, let's exclude seven bridges. And you know, for the last 12 years, we only had three emergency capital projects. One was the boiler at here that we had to clear that. And then also, I think this, this past year, there were two. One is that seven bridges, we have leaky roofs and the locker rooms, we have leak. So, you know, one is finished, fixed, the locker rooms are fixed. And the roof we have, we have a plan right now. Our engineer, engineers, they are planning, making a plan and then we'll bid out that to do the repair. The second one is in front of, really, we had a burst, right? This thing pipe. So these are the three emergency capital projects. And I think that's a very good record because we do have three old buildings. So I think in order to keep it up, I think I'll recommend...
I think if you look at it, you're right, only we as a district, we've asked, we've always been proactive in our maintenance and not reactive in some districts. Keep kicking 20,000 doors. So speaking of, come up with $49,000 capital project, not to improve the district value, just to get them back to the project. So, but I mean, it's something that can evaluate from a financial point of view from a long-term view.
And he's hoping for the long-range plans were not emergency-based, they were just maintenance. They were just, and like Warren said, were proactive.
But I think it's, I think one should, I think we'll get it.
So we'll work with Warren and Holly to, to address the number two. And then the first one, yeah, I think we'll think about it and then we'll come back to discuss this with...
Okay, so we're not discussing that today, we're discussing it.
I didn't do a lot... I'm sorry, I'm here, we, we, I think we'll, we'll, we can wait.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Do we need a, just a question, we need a call on the, um, tax audit?
No, we don't have it all later.
We have it. I'm sorry.
What presentation do you want?
I want to see. Okay, so let's just rest for a round a little bit here.
Okay.
I, yes.
Okay.
I don't need a laser pointer. All right, so, um, finally able to present to you after a long, apriori process, recommendations for your considerations from my, from the safety task force. Um, so I just want to remind the board that back in February, they had a task force committee at the district level to examine our current practices across our district. And, um, the membership of that committee included building administration, district administration, um, parents, um, outside personnel who are our partners. Um, uh, we had board of education members on there. We had our security team that works with us in district, our contract security team. We had general community representatives. We had parents who have expertise in security. Um, we had some students and we had PTA representatives. So we got a, a nice representative group to help us look at our overall security and safety in this district. So we began in February and we identified four major areas that we would be examining. And I'll go into those in a little bit, but for the purposes of just shaping the presentation, we looked at the entranceway at Greeley, our personnel procedures at Greeley, our infrastructure and procedures K-8, and then our K-12 social emotional health. In this process, uh, we decided that we would create a survey and send it out to the community. And then we would analyze that survey and based on, um, the information we received back from our community and our, um, experience, experiences at the threat processing and the task force, that we would come up to recommendation, come up with recommendations. And then I would present those recommendations to you tonight at this meeting. So I just want to share with you that, um, our initial analysis, we began by looking at our prior data. And as you know, in the spring of, uh, 2018, we did a significant outreach to our different stakeholders to get some feedback on our current practices and also, um, to get a pulse for some, um, different components of security that we were considering implementing here in the district. That included looking at student survey data, focus group data, um, community survey data, community focus group data, Greeley focus group data, and some expert audits that were done by an outside agency as well as our internal, um, OCS partners. And then we also looked at some benchmark data by comparing, um, what other districts were doing um, across the county in terms of supporting safety and security with adults. What happened?
I don't know.
Okay, we're good. Um, and so then we had that prior, um, we had all that prior data. Then we had our own experiences with constituents in this community. And then we had our history that we had to think about, about how this district viewed and approached security in the past. So, um, again, just to reiterate, we identified our four major areas. And we decided that based on our experiences and looking at all that data, we needed more information. So the board authorized us to consult with a, um, a marketing firm to create a new survey that we would send out to our total community, all of our staff and our Greeley, um, students to receive some information to help guide our recommendation process. So in terms of our survey, um, that we sent out to those constituents, we wanted to get a feel for their, um, our community's overall perceptions about how our school district was performing and about our, um, social emotional health and about our academic program. Um, we wanted some, a greater understanding of the temperature of how this community would tolerate an increased, um, video surveillance process within, with inside our buildings. We wanted to have an understanding of how this community felt about possibly having a, um, student resource officer available to our students at Greeley. And then we wanted, uh, a deeper understanding of how people felt about the entranceway of, of the high school. So the consultant group sent the survey out to, um, our community members, our faculty and staff, and to our Greeley High School students. And we have gone over this in a separate meeting that the board, uh, was a part of with our safety task force. That was open to the public. So just for the purposes of flow of this presentation, I just wanted to reiterate that in terms of the response rate, we had a significant response rate, um, from all three constituent groups. And in terms of our marketing analysis, a response rate of 1% to 2% is considered, um, normal. We were well over that in all three areas in terms of feedback that we received from people, from our community members. So in terms of overall perceptions, for our community members who took the, the, um, took the survey, 95% of them indicated that we had a very strong reputation for academic excellence. Um, and you can see in these other benchmark areas that there's overall positive feeling about safety at school, um, that, that we allocate resources to keep our students safe and that, um, we value community involvement and students are supported. These are our parents and, and, um, who live in our community, not only the people who have kids at school, but, um, community members who actually live here, may, may not have kids here. But overall, the tone and tenor of their perception of our district was very positive. Our faculty felt the same way, um, in many of the subcategories. But here you see towards, um, the lower end of the scale was some, a dip in how connected our adults felt with their kids here. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation in terms of our recommendations. And then our kids, again, they responded favorably, but in the area of their connection with our adults, they didn't respond as favorably in other areas. And they also, um, shared, um, some, um, a need for a better understanding of our, of our safety protocol in terms of their perceptions. But I, I think if you look at, um, all three constituent groups, in terms of the strongest satisfaction level was around our academic program, followed by the other areas of the survey.
Christine, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but the students were high school students?
Yes, they were high school students. Just high school students. We did not administer this to seventh grade. So then this is just a, um, a side-by-side analysis of the responses. Um, and you'll see that in terms of what I had just shared with you, academics were most favorably responded upon by the, the, the members of the community that took the survey. And then you'll see security and mental health were less favorably responded upon compared to the other areas. So then that's addressed in our recommendation section, but the section of this survey, that I'll share with you in a few moments. Okay, so, um, other information that we, we felt...
What's the difference between academics and academic path?
I'm sorry, the first part?
Academics and academic path.
Opportunities, courses availability. Academics was the overall rigor of the program and then the opportunities available within the academic program. Okay, so then, um, in terms of information, we also were thinking about in terms of recommendations, we noted that our community and our faculty and staff shared that they felt like at least 70% or more felt like they needed a better understanding of our protocol. So you're going to see that embedded in our recommendations. But we also noted that most of our, um, most of the community members responded still indicated that they felt that their kids were safe in school. Um, okay, so now, and you'll also note that our faculty felt they knew what to do if there was a security threat. Eighty, uh, 87% of them. And 76% of our kids felt like they, felt like they needed, they knew what they needed, um, to do. But that doesn't mean that we don't have to keep working with our kids in Greeley and maybe sort of practice our own privacy response. Okay, so now I'm going to move in. I'm sorry, sure.
Christine, did you get any insight as to why the faculty and staff maybe felt less safe at school? Would you think it was, um, related to their understanding of, like, they know too much or...
So when you say less safe, it's hard to articulate an answer to that because an overwhelming majority of our staff thinks that they felt safe at school.
Right.
So, um, to tease out of the 14% of the respondents why they responded in a neutral or less favorable way, I would have to ask a specific question. Um, but I don't know very exact reasons on that. Um, I, I don't, there wasn't enough, um, commentary in the open-ended section to make an assumption. So I could make some assumptions. It could be based on culture, it could be based on a whole bunch of things. But if the board locks us together, if you've got a very specific question, I could use it on a focus group. Okay? Also, the, um, community need for better understanding of safety protocol is a little bit hard to square with the fact that you can't always share all the safety protocols with the public for obvious safety and security reasons. So we, we might never be able to get up to, you know, the higher percentage points with the, the information. Correct. And I, I would like to add, and this whole presentation of the survey results is online to the community review, um, that there was a question, an exposure question for the committee, um, that was tiered. So we had the answer, um, a question in term, to, to the effect, are you aware of your child's safety, everything that we've done to address safety issues, including different protocols? And then we asked another question by sharing with them what we have actually done. And what we felt was that people weren't aware of the things that we were doing. They didn't have a knowledge base. So part of the recommendation was how do we get out there in a more meaningful way with things that we are currently doing to work with our kids to make sure that they're safe. So that is all articulated in the large version of the survey. Okay, so at this, at this point, I'm going to go into our recommendations and there, um, there's really three main portions of it. So maybe what we could do is for each section, we can discuss it, discuss it after I present the recommendation. Is that okay with everybody? All right, so the first is interior video surveillance at all school buildings. So, um, this had the most favorable response from our faculty and our parents. Um, we're probably one of the only districts that I, um, I'm aware of that doesn't use internal cameras to help support safety and security, um, within our community. So the task force felt very strongly that we, um, come up or propose a plan for your consideration that would move towards installing interior cameras in all of our schools. So that is the recommendation. And these are the reasons why the committee is recommending that. So the first is it will allow us to, um, monitor visitors as they come in, make sure they go where they're supposed to. It'll help us during real-time emergencies because we'll have more eyes on the situation. It'll help us direct resources when there is an issue. It'll improve our response time. It'll reduce vandalism and theft. And it'll assist in our administrative investigations. Because right now, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out what happened when we could just do it on a video camera. So what we're suggesting is we have an installation timeline that spans into the fall of 2021, where we would begin the installation process at Hurus Greeley High School over the course of a two-year period, since we do not place this in our budget. Um, so we would start installation in fall of 2019 with our completion date being summer of 2020. And then we would move into camera installation at, um, the two middle schools. And then after, um, next school year, we would move into installation at three elementary schools. And by fall of 2021, all districts would have all video surveillance in the, um, in all of our six buildings. So we'd like to discuss this recommendation.
I have a question after recommendation, which is when we talk about, uh, video installation throughout the buildings, um, am I correct in assuming that there are going to be areas in the building, namely restrooms and locker room, that there are no cameras?
That's correct. So, um, we would not have them in classrooms with the exception of probably the phys ed, the gyms. And they would not be in bathrooms, they would not be in walk-throughs, any areas which would have reasonable expectation of privacy.
And I guess certainly my follow-up question is, obviously, this is more to sort of low-level violations, if you will, than, than sort of higher levels of security concerns. But wouldn't that just in some ways, to the extent that the students are trying to avoid the cameras, wouldn't it just incentivize them that they're going to be breaking the rules to do it in an area where, you know, that there's no cameras and sort of, how do you get around that from a, from a, you know, enforcement of code?
Right, so, um, if I think about the issues that we've worked through at Greeley, um, in terms of the use of these cameras, the concerns that we have around monitoring who's coming in and out of our building because of the overflow of this facility. So in order to track down someone who may or may not have reason to be here, particularly when all of our kids are similar-looking, it becomes very challenging for us. So having another system in place in order to search for someone would be extraordinarily helpful. We had a situation in the spring where we had a visitor who did not check in, who was, um, 17 years old and was, in his description, was very difficult to, um, to identify him. And so we were able to do through, so we went through an extraordinary process that included our police to be able to figure out who this person was and verify that they had left the building and then communicate with them that they weren't supposed to be on campus. However, if we had a video surveillance process or system in place, that would have taken us minutes. So that's really what is pushing this, um, surveillance process forward in this particular building specifically. Um, the other benefits are articulated clearly through the task force. But this gives us another layer to help manage the 11 buildings here in a way that is, is more efficient. Now with that said, of the discipline that we deal with here, a lot of it is in the bathroom. So this isn't going to deter that or not, and it's around baby. So are there things that are happening in the hallway that may move into the bathroom? Yes, that's certainly a possibility because there's no cameras in there, but we don't have, we're not really dealing with a lot of issues in the hallway.
Yeah, no, I guess that was my reaction is that I think for the, the purposes you stated, this makes a lot of sense. I just think that in reading the full task force report, there was stuff in there about, oh, this would sort of preempt, prevent and alleviate other, you know, code violation sort of issues. And I think it's probably less likely to do that. But I think that for the purposes you've identified, it makes a lot of sense.
And to your point, Hillary, we don't have a lot of discipline issues at Greeley. Right, so some issues that we have are theft. So this would help with that, with monitoring who's going in and out of rooms where that's happening. Um, and we have some issues where, you know, kids are doing things in the bathroom that they shouldn't. We already have cameras outside of our bathrooms based on some issues that happened in the spring, um, around speech. So we already have surveillance there. We just need to, I think, um, increase our surveillance of the entire building. And that's why this recommendation has been made. And then there are times where Mark and Joe are spending an extraordinary amount of time trying to figure out what happened in the hallway, where if we had cameras in the hallway, it would reduce that time significantly. So I, I, I think that, um, the benefits far outweigh, um, maybe the concerns people would have about privacy since they won't be in places where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy.
Um, I'd like to know what the cost would be, how we have the cost due for horse吠.
Right, so the two middle schools are $100,000 each, estimate, because we haven't had a full evaluation of those buildings completed yet. And then the elementary schools are estimated at $75,000 each. So if, um, the board, the Greeley number is hard to know because we did have a, um, a full analysis of this building at the end of the school year after we had that incident of the visitor who came in and didn't check in. We had, we had, we had to figure out who that was. I had to joke with the estimate. So, um, if the board gives concessional approval to move forward, we'll have the, um, analysis done of those five other buildings and have our numbers ready.
Why do we have a gap in the year between summer 2020 and summer 2021?
Well, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, why do we have a gap to come in the summer 20, to come in the summer 2021? Is that just for your charge?
Um, so it's our budgeting, right? So we use the budget approval process to install the cam, to complete the camera install for Greeley and install middle school cameras in the summer 2020. And then we use the next fiscal year to install the cameras for the elementary schools in summer 2021. So by fall 2021, all will intend to be covered.
Christine, is this simply adding additional cameras or does the system that we need to monitor all of these schools need to change?
Turn your camera on. So right now, we have a limited number of cameras. So...
Right now, we only have outdoors, basically, except...
So that's pretty straightforward for somebody to be monitoring. Will this only be used as something to go back to in retrospect, or will there be active monitoring of it?
Oh!
And if so, do we need to upgrade other equipment to be able to adequately do that? What are your pieces of that?
Okay, we would like to be monitoring actively, so just in case we can see something. But obviously, you know, we have the thing about personnel, so...
Right, that's what I was wondering, what's in that number? Is it just cameras?
There's just cameras, not personnel.
Or changes to the monitor?
Well, you know, the reality is that right now, all of the security guards at each school, they're all monitoring. But right now, they are only monitoring the outdoor.
Can I add, I'm sorry, Holly, the price point for Greeley includes all the equipment, every roof guard, and who's the cameras across the school. So any upgrades that would need to happen to the system are included in that price?
I think the question also, the second part...
Right, is who's going to be monitoring this? So we'll give access to all of our security guards and to all of our administrators, but it would be the expectation that our security personnel would be monitoring this real time.
And how about keeping the data? I don't know how long we keep it for the external cameras and the ones that are already there. Is that going to stay the same?
No, it will stay the same.
You have, yes.
I think it's 30 days. I think, not necessarily...
It's only monitoring currently, the police don't have connection?
No, just with only one.
Would an SRO have access?
We're going to have to decide that. But right now, would we allow our police officer to monitor our cameras who's stationed at Greeley? Any other questions? Is everyone okay with this recommendation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move forward and begin to plan, and hopefully, we'll be able to do some Greeley this year out of our budget. But if not, we will put this within our budgeting process for next year.
So is this something we need to vote on, or is it administrative?
We're just looking for your conceptual approval. And then if we move forward with the contract to engage the company in work this year, we'll have that as a resolution for your consideration.
It may or may not, because if we use a state contract, we may not, all depends which direction we're going.
So we're going to start working on it, basically, if it's okay with everybody. Okay. So the second one, student resource officer at Horace Greeley High School. So we've had a police officer stationed here since the Parkland incident. And so one of the things that we wanted to have a better understanding of is should this person be a student resource officer assigned to our high school? And what that would mean is that person would be a member of the Newcastle Police Department, but they also would be a member of our school community, and we would be a part of supporting that position financially. And then we would have an agreement with Newcastle Police Department that would be approved by the Board of Education, and how that person would operate in the context of our school building, with our administration, and our students. So we felt that our faculty overwhelmingly supported having an SRO in this district. And that could be for a variety of reasons, but I believe that, and I don't want to make an assumption, but we've had a pretty good experience with Newcastle PD being on site since the Parkland incident, and they've been very helpful on a few incidents where people who didn't belong here came here. So I would say that the administration and faculty particularly at Greeley are very supportive of having a police officer here on a regular basis to support both them and our students. And there was a supportive response in general from our parents. Our kids were, and you'll see throughout here, in terms of cameras, in terms of the SRO, in terms of the single point of entry, they're loop response, they have a loop response to any kind of initiatives that would impact their freedom, and that was noted in their comments in the open ended section. But the safety task force is recommending that we move forward and work with the Newcastle Police to support having an SRO as a member of our school district community. And so the process for that to occur would be that if conceptually approved by the Board of Education, I would work with the town of Newcastle with our attorney to craft the required memorizing of understanding for your consideration on the August 29th meeting, which would address our costs that we would pay to the town of Newcastle to support this position, as well as this person's role within our community, specifically with respect to student discipline. And all of the MOU's, there are MOU guidelines that come out of the State Education Department, because many other districts have student resources, student resource officers as a part of their academic infrastructure in their buildings. So we would be working together to present something for your consideration on the 29th. And provided you were comfortable with this and you approved it, then Horace Greeley High School Administration and the town of Newcastle would begin a process of interviewing potential candidates, and then we would have someone for your consideration at the September 25th meeting. So if you're conceptually okay with this, I would engage town of Newcastle in the MOU creation process, and I also would have to make some adjustments to the safety plan to reflect the fact that we're moving in the direction of having SRO on our property, because that's required by law. Comments, questions?
Well, I guess there are two points that I'd like to make about this. If we are to consider an SRO, I think we first of all have to be very clear that whatever's normally covered, a school discipline would remain just that. And I would like to understand what leeway the SRO would have to abide by that. So for instance, if a student were to engage in activity that might be considered criminal, and if he didn't have an SRO, and that would be dealt with by the principal, would the SRO have to address that incident regardless of the MOU? So those are issues I think we need to clear up. Also, I'd like to be assured that this is a person who's had training in working with children, with students, and someone who has had training or understanding of child development, and also the needs of our special ed students, and the differences that they might see behaviors there. And I would also like to understand exactly where they would spend their time, how they would, you know, travel through the school, inside or outside, you know, during class period, outside, you know, during breaks, et cetera. So, you know, and I could go through a whole list, but I think that there are a lot of considerations that we have to check off and talk about.
And I agree with you, and I would share that all of those concerns would have to be clearly outlined with the MOU, so there's no misunderstanding of what this person's role is in our district. And I also would share that a student resource officer is a specific certification that is required to certify that capacity, that identifies the police officer as qualified to work with students. So as part of our process on the 29th, if you conceptually agree with us from the board, I would present all of that information for you at that time.
Are we expecting this to be someone who's already serving on the Newcastle Police Force, or would this be someone to the entire community?
That would be a discussion that we would have to have with Newcastle Police if we decide to move in this direction.
Are they armed?
Yes, if you were to...
That's the difference between SRO and...
Just a matter of...
Isn't the current Newcastle Police Officer who's at the Greeley High School armed?
Yes.
I mean, there's been an armed Police Officer at Greeley since Parkland.
Yes.
Before that. How, what's the time on site? Do you have a prepared plan?
Time on site would be every day, five days a week, during supplies.
So basically, okay.
Same.
And is there anything, is it September 25th recommendation of the school, until we have, can we increase the timeline?
So I think that what we will do is we will keep the status quo until we are ready to appoint the SRO, which means that starting in September, the police officer will remain here, who's been here since Parkland, and we would engage in a process of paying for that person with the Newcastle Police Department.
Do we happen to know whether, as you mentioned, that there's been a positive relationship with this officer? Do we happen to know whether the officer who's currently at Greeley does have the certification?
She does.
Does it affect that there would be pushback from the students?
No, I think that the feedback from students, since the police officer has been here, he's been a little positive around the school administration.
So even though they appear a little bit warm, it's probably just them being too interested.
I think that, I'm asking them about restricting some of their freedoms, but I think that's ...
It doesn't represent...
It's not representing a change to their status quo.
I understand.
But they perceive it that way.
If you look at their response rate to most of the questions here, it's pretty consistent.
Cameras, SRO.
It's also, there are very few of them who are actually in the disapproval category. They're largely neutral. There's a lot more positive, a lot more who approve either somewhat or strongly than disapprove either somewhat or strongly.
I think I'm, you know, with the discussion that you find uncomfortable, you're very shaped.
Comfortable in court?
Yeah. But I just also just want to, you know, that we have to set the standards with the assumption that it may not obviously be the person that we're used to, and that the kids really, really like and are comfortable with. So we just have to keep an eye to looking at that MOU, assuming that this person may leave, so, you know, that's why I think we have to be very careful with the criteria, despite the fact that we may all feel very comfortable with the status quo, which is what we would basically be staying at.
What do you see in the other view?
So, can I just share what I'm hearing is we're conceptually okay with being moved forward with the SRO. We now do work on the MOU. What would be helpful for me is if you email me your concerns regarding the MOU, so I can sit with David and Newcastle Police and make sure that they're all practical within the MOU outside of this meeting. So I'm hearing them from Vicky, but you may help me with anything about other things, but you're like, you know what, we really need to make sure this is reflected in this agreement. If you send those to me in writing within the next week, that would be really helpful. Is that okay? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes. Do you have any sample MOU?
Yes, I do. We do, we have them, because so many other districts have these, and they're required by regulation. So we'll probably pull from them, but I want to make sure that your concerns are reflected within them, so I want to be sure that I clearly understand them.
If possible, I'd like to see a couple, yeah, just to see.
Sure, that's probably a good idea. So why don't I send you three or four?
Thank you.
Okay, sure, no problem. All right, so I do want to share that while there will be an SRO present at Greeley, the other five schools will have their regular visitation on Newcastle P Day that occurs during the context of the school day, which has always occurred, so none of that is going to change. Okay, so the last portion of this is the building entrance at Horace Greeley High School. So we found that our faculty, and for the most part, our parents, supported having a single point of entry. And what that would mean is that when you think about what that looks like, and how we described it, it would be a single point to enter the building at the front of the building. So if you think back to what we presented initially in spring 2018, we showed slides and pictures that would give a rendering of what potentially a closed front could look like if we designed it in that way. So what we found when we asked the question is most people supported having a single point of entry. And these were the three main reasons why they supported closing our front. Visitor vetting, mitigating interior entry, and making sure that we had a security professional's report who was coming in and out of our facility. It's very hard for us to do that right now based on how our current structure is. And we also had our community share that they would financially, most of them would financially support this in some way, whether it be through our current budget or through a tax increase. But we were prepared to make a recommendation to you on what we should do. We felt like we needed to examine this issue further. So the recommendation is to take this one particular issue and have a specific group focus on it. And under John's leadership with Andrew, really get people around the table who are experts in this area, and come up with a recommendation for you in January, if you are having it forward.
When we're talking here about the single point of entry, you're talking to the buildings, not to the campus.
Right, so in terms of the perimeter security initiative, and this is the next slide, this had a loop more response. So in terms of what our people were feeling was that this is not, while this may mitigate some of the issues that we're experiencing, the best way to move forward is to figure out a way to have a single point of entry at the front of Greeley, like we have in our five other buildings on campus. We're just not sure how to do that in a way that's palpable for everybody. And that recommendation is not only based on the feedback we've recently received, but the survey data from 2018. So we feel like we need to take a real specific look at this particular issue for a longer period of time with different experts around the table to come back to you and say, this is what we think we should do. Because whatever we decide to do, we need to figure out a way to fund it. And that would be, that would be a significant cost to our community, so we feel that we need to engage in more study on this particular issue. I think a more in-depth look at this would be, would give us a more realistic understanding of what people think, because I'm not sure that they have all of the information that we have access to. For instance, we have a lot of visuals, which for me, made it a much more realistic option after having seen the visuals, because of the nature of our campus, it's very hard to envision what that would look like. So I mean, I think that the initial survey was good, but by nature of the survey itself, it's very hard to get into certain details, which I think would be important in a case like this.
I would like to see parents of younger students represented, because it's really their children who are going to be the ones living with that, and they may have a very different contact than the students sitting there who are used to the high school as they are.
And I think that's a great point, and I'd also share, if you tease out the data, the younger parents will be receptive to paying for this.
We're just wondering, did you present one of the percent?
Oh, right, it's right on the right side of there. But they would definitely...
We need a few walkthroughs, because I know that when parents about entry school kids come to Greeley, they're really shocked. So they may not have enough information of what it's like actually to be at Greeley. So that, I mean, I agree that they definitely must be included, even hopefully, the benefits of it, but we have to make sure that they get familiar enough with the campus.
Well, and you're talking about being the benefits, but they also aren't going to be, I think, as put off by the idea. I think that change is very hard to stomach, very understandably, especially when people have been used to the campus being like this, either as a student or as a parent or a student or multiple students. But I think that also adapting, it's not having to adapt if it's all you ever know. So that I think that, whereas it certainly would be a major change to the way the building operates, I think that if it can be done in such a way that the building still functions, obviously, and the flow of student traffic isn't harmed, that would be all that anybody coming in after the construction would ever know, so.
So everyone okay with us moving this question? So then our target would be January 22nd, 2020. We'll have another presentation about this issue for you. And then finally, the other areas that we are going to... And then finally, the other areas that we are going to move forward with, at least on survey feedback, and then our own experiences. We're going to do an internal audit, because if you remember an issue when I was describing the survey results, there was some commentary that maybe we're not doing as great a job as we thought we were protecting kids outside of the classroom. So we want to see what we're doing currently and then analyze whether or not that's enough or if we need to make some adjustments. We need to get information out to the community about our practices and our policies to the extent possible based on our safety restrictions. So we plan to send a communication when post school starts. And not only addresses our safety plan, and parents in contact if their kids are having some kind of mental health concern, because there was some mental health commentary in there that we were concerned about. But we also know the board has passed a new policy. So we're going to place this all in one communication that we're going to push out to our families. And then I will run some focus groups at Greeley because I need to have a better understanding of the mental health response rate that the kids reported to us. So I want to ask some questions about that, and then I'll report that back out to the board once I have a better feel of why they responded in the way that they did, where they shared, many of them shared that we weren't doing enough to support their mental health. I have some assumptions, but I want to ask the questions with some of our faculty. So then, just in summary, we plan to take these three steps. And then we're going to conceptually move forward with the cameras. We're going to conceptually move forward with the SRO. And we're going to conceptually move forward with the subcommittee to look at the financials at Greeley in terms of crafting some kind of single point of entry. Does anyone have any other additional suggestions that you'd like us to consider or any concerns with our faculty board?
Just one question, which is, is the intent, neither of them are not looking at the perimeter initiative. Is the intent that the security guard who's been sort of in the driveway to Greeley is going to remain there?
Everything's going to remain status quo. We're not going to change anything we have in place from that. It's going to add.
I just wanted to reiterate thanks for all of your time and effort put into this to Greeley, make sure that we understand and you understand the community that's going to be impacted. And I'm really glad to see the look at the mental health because I think that across the board, that's becoming a drawn high rate in time.
And also, so many people helped doing this. It wasn't just the people who took the survey, but it was faculty, administrators, PTA, and other parents who came to meetings and participated in looking at the results of the survey and analyzing it to make this presentation. There was a lot of work that went into this, by a lot of people from different stakeholder groups. Listen, I appreciate you sharing your comments with me. And I will express them to the committee if I send them via presentation tomorrow and that all the recommendations were accepted by the board. There were, a lot of people gave up a lot of their time to be a part of this committee. And we had a really strong representation of different viewpoints around the table. I think you're crafting really strong recommendations to be of consideration. So thank you for accepting them. I think it's only going to make our district stronger. And I feel like while we do have some work ahead of us, we're going in a direction that I think is very necessary for our kids. So I appreciate that.
One last thing I would ask, and I mean, you can be thinking about is how people look back in a few years and evaluate the decision that we've made and if they're working out in a group of standing committee or something. But I would just be interested to know how we'll make sure that, you know, this is maybe the difference we expect.
So we left our last meeting with our task force indicating that we would probably reconvene in the group at the beginning of the square. So we plan to do that. We plan to do that. So we'll have to make sure we have an ongoing standing meeting on our calendar because I think it's good for our group to sit around and talk about how we are doing. We'll be together. Any other additional comments? Okay, so let me just, I've got to find that. I wanted to show you the profile of this. No, no. Okay, so before we get into the, I open the hearings up. We are at the final stages of our profile of the Greeley graduate. I want to thank Jane and Vicky for all of their support, for the communication committee's feedback. We have, this may be hard to see. But we have taken our, this has been a year process where we have tried to figure out a way to represent what our profile would look like in our buildings for our community. And as you may remember, through our strategic planning process, we developed the skills and attributes that we felt were most important for us to cultivate in our students K through 12. So we took our logo and we... Hold on, I'm going to have to... Okay, we took our logo and we had, we had placed our skills and attributes around the logo that were identified during the strategic planning process. And we plan on putting this within our school buildings and using this as our profile moving forward. So if anyone has any, this has been through the strategic planning task force. It's been through the entire administrative team multiple times. I think we're at the end of our, of our process and our journey here. But if anyone has any final comments before we put this to print?
Can we hear the say skills and attributes? I think it shows you the skills and attributes.
So we feel like we need to articulate skills and attributes because that's the messaging from the strategic planning team. Yes, Vicky.
A very Vicky point, but Warren, you want to go?
Isn't that, do you have any of the words of skills and attributes? As you say, oh, these are skills and attributes.
I can bring that feedback back, Warren.
Will you be able to change it to the snowman here or not?
The snowman?
Thank you. So just another very Vicky point of this, yeah, point in time. Why is Greeley not capitalized? You have profile and graduate capitalized. It looks a little awkward.
I will capitalize Greeley. What does everyone else think?
If that's what, it doesn't feel this...
Or are you capitalizing?
I'll make the caps.
All right, I will capitalize Greeley. Any other final comments? Yes?
And it may not be possible. Okay, but if it is, the skills go from the word skills around counterclockwise. And then attributes, if they could, if those two could go clockwise from attributes, I think it would make more sense to separate them as two different things. Otherwise, right now, they're all...
You have to compare orange versus blue.
We talked about that a lot. I'm not sure that I understand what you're getting at. Sorry, I'm a little...
Okay, so from the word skills is in blue and then the skills move counterclockwise from the word skills. And then attributes, the words don't move from attributes. They move from the skills counterclockwise. I think if perspiring and ethical...
Right. Directed, if those were to move clockwise from the S in attributes, it would... You want this to read this way and this to read that way?
Yes, I expected to see the attributes flow from attributes go together.
I'm, I totally see what you're saying, whether it be really hard to read.
I found this hard to read. So it may, it may just be six one-way and half a circle in the other, but I like it conceptually.
Okay, thank you. Is that your warm feedback you're going to hit?
No, I like it. I think it looks good. None of these changes would bother me, but I also find it good that way too. Like, I think it looks good.
The only thing, if I can add up to your feedback, I knew what I was kind of thinking the same way. I just wonder if it may not look great because they don't actually meet in the middle. And so the way that, so the continuity of it going in the same direction allows it to flow.
And I guess a graphic designer is probably the right person to say whether that would work.
I don't know if it will, but that was the only thing I was thinking about.
But I just, it threw me off when I first started to read it, so.
And I guess we want kids to be good. So as they're reading along, we don't want them to stop and then get very pressured and interrupted. Because they're like, oh, I'll have to go back.
But skills and attributes already goes that way. So I mean, either way, you've got to shift.
Well, that's why it would be helpful to...
Well, let me, let me have a design. Let me see what it looks like. So what I'm hearing is I'm going to change Greeley to caps. And then I'm going to flip this and see what that, we'll see what that looks like and then make a decision. Hillary's saying she really liked what it looked like.
I wouldn't have known it's bad, but I think I just naturally read in a circle.
But you know what's great about your comment, Hillary? This is a fresh perspective because everyone here has seen it. So you're like, you're like the pair of coming in and seeing it fresh.
Don't you like that?
I like that.
I think, I agree with capitalizing Greeley because it's an easy...
Well, you know what might be difficult? Although I agree with Holly, I can also see not changing it because when you read skills and attributes, you're reading from left to right. And that sort of a phrase writes out. And then the rest of it, you're reading left to right. It may be a little difficult to read the other way, sort of going this way. Could be a counterintuitive way of reading something.
Well, let me just...
That's why we took skills and attributes example, just have a little circle.
I'm talking about some big one, but anyway. Okay, well, I'll send you the final version. I appreciate everybody's feedback. It's been a long process for us. But I think it looks good.
But guess what?
But listen, it's come a long way. It's so much better than what it was originally.
And we used it today with something else.
I think we used it. Okay, thank you.
And they're going to be, you can turn those into magnets.
We can put it on the... Into the podium we have.
Yeah, the podium. It can come back to you.
Okay, so thank you everybody for your feedback. So now I'd like to open the district-wide safety plan and the code of conduct here. So what I'll do in terms of this process is I'll go through very generally the district-wide safety plan. And then I'll ask if there are any comments from anyone in the community, and then we'll move into the code of conduct. So the district-wide safety plan is something that needs to be approved annually by the Board of Education. And in order for the approval process to be completed, it has to be posted 30 days in advance of the approval on our website. And we have to notice a meeting in which it will be discussed in a public hearing and newspaper bulletin which have been satisfied. So this is a required document that has a lot of legalese in it from regulatory requirements of New York State. And this is the public document that is placed online for our community to view. Each building has a building-specific safety plan that is not for public viewing. This is just our overall program. A lot of the components of this are regulatory in nature, so there's not a lot of latitude in changing the language. That doesn't mean that we can't make considerations and adjustments based on feedback. So the first part of the, the safety plan is the general purpose as well as the required members of the district safety plan pursuant to commissioner regulations and their specific goals. Then we move into the concept of operations. And we talk about the protocol in terms of reviewing this plan with public in public comment. And you'll see the meeting requirements that I just outlined verbally for you listed below. As we go down, we have to articulate in general what are some risk prevention and intervention programs that we currently have in place. And then we have to articulate the training drills and exercises that are required by the district to undertake with our staff. And you'll see that our district staff are required to be trained in our emergency plans, violence prevention, and mental health procedures by September 15th of each year. And our new employees that come to school after our training dates are required to be trained within 30 days. And then our students are required to be trained by our staff. Then you'll see the drills and the exercises that we are required to undertake in terms of our work with our staff and with our students, as well as the four major areas that we need to make sure that we are covering in the context of our drilling with our students. That include our early release drills, sheltering in place, holding in place, lockdowns, and evacuations. Then we have some, we have language in here that talks about our agency information as well as our implementation of our school security programs. And this is where you'll see that we have building-level emergency response plans that are now public. And then how the principal takes a lead role in making sure that those plans are facilitated appropriately in each of their areas. We talk about the description of our security guards. And for our, for our safety plan purposes for our meeting on the 29th, where this will be up for your consideration for approval, there'll be an additional section here on the responsibilities of the SRO, which is required under New York State regulations to be incorporated in the safety plan. So that will be an additional section added within here that is not currently present. And then we have some language that we need to have in here in terms of identifying potentially violent behaviors and then what our response is in terms of when an emergency takes place, both internally and externally. What are emergency response protocols and how they are part of your maintenance at the building level and reviewed annually and periodically. And then we have our multi-hazard response language that is required to be articulated at the building level as well. And then we have our procedures that we undertake when we have threats of violence against our students or our staff in our schools. Then we have our response to implied or direct threats that are made against the district and how we are, how we respond to those particular incidents as they occur. And then we have additional commentary about how we are, how we respond when acts of violence occur within our, within the context of our school programs. Then we have the required emergency contact information for our community partners. And then we also have how we coordinate in terms of our, in terms of resource coordination and when an emergency is to occur. And then we have our protective action options as well as our school cancellation policies, early dismissal policies. And then we have different actions that we may take in response to specific emergencies, which include sheltering in place, holding in place, evacuations, lockdowns, lockdowns, response. And then we have our response protocols. So basically what this section does is it outlines for parents what happens when we make these determinations that we need to engage in certain emergency responses based on specific situations. So if we were to place our students in a lockdown, we'd be able to go to a safety document and read what a lockdown actually is. We're required to post that under law. And then we have our response protocols. And we talk about how we respond in different situations based on what the needs are of the specific emergency. And then we articulate how we are required to have a district emergency response team and what the purpose of that team is. And then the ways in which we would respond in general to specific incidents. And then the roles of people that are responding within those incidents. So people have a context of how we interact when we're dealing with an emergency. And then we have a section here on how we would recover if there were an incident in terms of supporting our students and our families based on what the incident is. So a lot of what you have presented in front of you is regulatory language that we're required to post by law. But that doesn't mean that we can't shape this language differently based on what we perceive our needs to be in check of law. But I also want to share with you that this plan has been crafted with our regional safety expert from MOSIS as well with our attorney. So what I would suggest now is that if there's any members of the public that have comments that they would like to be added to the hearing record for the safety plan, that they would be afforded the opportunity to do so. There are no comments by the public at this time. I would share with you, I have received one comment from a member of the public that they would like to be considered as a part of the hearing record, which deals or addresses how we would support special education students, which I know is sent to the General Board of Education. So when the policy committee sits down and reviews all the comments in relation to the Safety Plan, we will talk about that suggestion at that time. I would also suggest that if the Board of Education has any comments that they would like the policy committee to review when visiting, when we are reviewing comments regarding the Safety Plan in our next policy committee meeting, that they email those comments to the Board of Education. But specifically make sure that Vicki and Warren have a copy of those comments that they are part of the policy committee. And the board will have this in front of them for discussion on August 29th. So at this point, I'd like to close the hearing on the Safety Plan. Okay? Okay. So now let me go over the Code of Conduct. Okay, there's two pieces to this. So the general Code of Conduct, and there's not. There's not substantial adjustments to this part of the policy. The general Code of Conduct, so I'm going to open the hearing on the Code of Conduct, is the guidelines in which our, our community operates in terms of our behavioral expectations of our students as they attend school in our district. The overall Code of Conduct is regulatory language that articulates what our expectations are of how we're supposed to treat each other in this building. And you will see that because you have the board and the committee has a copy of the redlined version of the Code of Conduct, that there aren't many changes, substantial changes to the policy. There are minimal adjustments that add additional language to clarify certain actions that we may or may not engage in when students engage in particular behaviors that we address that expand our ability to intervene in ways that may be disciplinary or may also result in remedial actions. So if you look at page one, you'll see that there's one word added that the Code provides for proper discipline, discipline, and remedial actions because some of the actions that we may take to intervene in a behavioral issue may not be disciplinary in a remedial nature, so we needed to reflect that. And you also say we did, you'll see under one of our bullets, we switched some word phrases around that's not substantial. On the next page, we added some language regarding confidentiality in terms of how we respect our students when issues occur. We added some language under the role of teachers that includes gender identity. We added some language about our teachers in terms of communication with our students regarding course objectives and requirements and grading procedures and their expectation in making sure our parents and students have clear understandings of that. If you keep moving forward, we added some language in terms of our role of parents notifying us when they have concerns that are respectful in time and manner and about our expectations of their interactions with our staff, other parents and students. The only other addition we put in the general overview of our Code of Conduct is that we added a teacher as an individual who is able to administer an academic penalty to the language within the code. The substantial changes that I'd like to talk about are actually in the regulations. And there's only two. So the regulations are what the principals use to determine what the appropriate consequence should be based on the infraction. So this document is very important to us because when students are. If the intervention required results in their removal from school for a period of time, whether it's in school or out of school, we need to clearly articulate the justification for that and reference our regulations. So it's important that our regulations are reflected, that our needs based on the incident that we dealt with over the course of the school year. So the only adjustments that I'm suggesting for your consideration is if you go down to the possession, sale, purchase, distribution, or ingestion of any edible product containing CBD. If you've been. If you. One of the areas that we're anticipating potentially having a future concern regarding our students use of substances is that if you have been in any of the gas stations, you'll see that there are next, usually to the vaping pods, there are ingestible items that people can consume that have CBD products within them. And that is the, that is a. That is a chemical that is derived from marijuana plant that's not, that can be legally sold over the counter in some places and not legally served over the counter in other places. So we wanted to put language in after consulting with the high school that products that have CBD in them are not, are not permitted in our district. In some cities have banned the ingestible CBD products. Some cities have not. Some products have labels on them that students can, that you can only buy them if you're 18 or older. Some do not. There's just too much, too many questions around products like this for us to safely say that students can use them within the construct of our school, our school facilities. So we want to prohibit their use by our students moving forward and articulate that clearly in our Code of Conduct. This is a, this is a new area. This is like a new product. It's kind of like where vaping was a year and a half ago. So we're trying to get ahead of it and have some language in here in collectives now that they're not allowed to consume any edible products with CBD components within them. So that's one piece that I'd like, I'd like you to consider adding to your, because I anticipate a problem coming and I'm trying to prevent that. Can we turn the line off?
Oh.
Can I just stay tuned still?
Yeah.
Or just like to read from the paper or not?
Yeah, so this is the first piece, right? So probably on the 29th, we're going to need to talk a little bit about this more. I'll have Margot at that meeting because this is very, this is a very new, this is new, this is new. There's a lot of information out there that I can present to you from the FTA about this particular product. I just don't, I don't, I don't think we know enough about this product to say that it's safe for kids to use it. So if there's questions around students using this product, I think it makes sense to err on the side of not allowing them to. Like you see, there are other products as well, like oils containing CBD. So we may want, we may want to expand this. We may want to. I'm just, the concern that I'm having for this particular item is that particularly New York City has just banned CBD products from their stores, edible products. They haven't banned oils or hemp or anything like that, but they have specifically banned CBD gummies, CBD gum. So I'm just, there's too many questions around this to say that this is something that I feel comfortable with kids bringing to school, allowing other kids to taste. So I have it in, I have it in here for our general discussion.
Let me say that Vicki says possession, so it's oil or something else that's possession, so.
Yeah, actually.
It specifies edible.
It's just edible.
Yeah, it's such edible.
I just isolated it as edible. And my point was that there are items, products that are non-edible. Supposedly, although kids have done crazy things with non-ingestible products or things that should be non-ingestible. So I don't, I, what, this is what I do now. I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of kids buying gummy bears, for example, with CBD in it, eating that in school and giving that to their classmates and their classmates eating that in school and their parents not knowing about it. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us to a place where that's not going to be okay. So that's why I have this in here. So I definitely think the policy committee has to flush this out a little bit more. And I don't think a lot of districts are tackling this language right now because I don't think they're anticipating it as a problem, but Andrew and I are. So that's why I have it in here. And then the other piece of this is, we had an issue this year where we had students that were distributing vaping supplies, but we didn't have language under our smoking policy that I would be able to categorize it in that way. So it had to be categorized as a controlled substance. So I just want to expand the language in this category so that if a student were to distribute a vaping, a vaping device to another student, that we had a better representation of that within our disciplined Code of Conduct. So I wouldn't have to classify that as a controlled substance. So that's why there is additional language here to allow us to be able to do that. Plus, Margot added some regulatory language that was lacking within the policy to include that in our section. But those are really the only two adjustments that I'm suggesting. So at this time, are there any public comments regarding the Code of Conduct that they would like right into the record for the policy committee to consider prior to presenting the final Code of Conduct to the Board of Education on August 29th? Okay, so again, I suggest the same process. And I know that Holly and Hillary have already emailed some comments, which is great. If you have any additional comments that you'd like the policy committee to review prior to the 29th, if you could send those in writing to the board or at least to Vicki and Warren so that we could bring it to the policy committee with Margot there and try to work that language into the, into our document. I haven't received any comments on the Code of Conduct from anyone since this was posted. Okay? Thank you. All right, that's, that's all. That concludes the Code of Conduct hearing.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay. We will move on to committee reports. Policy Committee, we have our work. We have a schedule of meetings that Lisa sent us, which is, you know, of course, always tentative. But that, that should be posted on the website. We'll have to meet before 29th, so we have to go over, run all of this. Communications, we've got a schedule of meetings out for, for the year of Navarre's transition. Facilities, John, did you go on?
Well, we already scheduled, well, right now we're trying to get all the capital projects done. And then we have another meeting scheduled that I currently need to stay, so we're at this point.
And then we want to have the board do a walk through in September. Yeah, so we'll forward to that. A tour of which? All, okay. Yeah, we used to do. Right, we used to separate those in like between two days.
So when you talk about, I think the facilities committee would talk about the older day recommendation. Is it going to be one day or weekend day to get on the bus and visit all the schools? Or do we divide up?
Yes, we've done two schools for three days. Does that make better sense just to do it all in one day? All right, somebody will discuss.
So any other comments?
And then just one more committee, all the committee.
We're having a meeting in September.
Yes, September 17th. Listened out to notice.
Okay, so we will now go into our public comment period. We welcome public comments. May I ask you limit your comments to three minutes? You can always contact us by email or phone. And once this comment period has been completed, we may have, the board members may have to have a discussion amongst themselves regarding what comments consented, but just to, you know, credit the, not a conversation. So if there's anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and. All right, so we will move on to approvals and ratifications. I'm going to suggest we take 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 together, which is accepting the minutes from the July 10th, July 23rd, and July 38th. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I move.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? On favor? I recommend 4.1 instruction was presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
A second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? I recommend 4.2 instruction was presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.2.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, I'm going to suggest we take 5.1 and 5.2, the CSE studies, together. Do I have a motion to accept these? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, first off, all right. 5.3, promotion for, whereas the Board of Education has been authorized by the voters of the school district at the annual meeting to raise for the budget for the 2019, 2020 school year a sum not to exceed $126,152,188 for school district purposes and a sum not to exceed $3,176,254 for library purposes. Therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby fix the equalized tax rates by towns and confirm the extension of the taxes as they appear on the following described tax roll. And there will be an attached document with date and hour of adoption reported. Is that everything I gave you? Do I have a motion for 5.3?
I move that we accept. I move 5.3 at 9:46 PM on August 7th.
Oh, I see, okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to roll call or anything?
We have the 5.4 is the resolution.
Okay. So 5.4, any motion for the resolution issuing the tax warrant? Do I have to read that whole thing?
I move on to 5.4.
I will second 5.4. Discussion? All in favor? Do we have to go one by one or?
Roll call?
Do you want us to go?
Yes, do a roll call.
Okay. Lauren Bessner?
Aye.
Hillary Grasson?
Aye.
You can tip?
Aye.
Call and roll call? Lisa, do we need to tend to that right now?
No, we have to sign it up for me.
All right, thank you. Okay, 5.5, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the agreement with educational and management services incorporated for special education services during the 2012-2020 school year in the amount of $24,000 and authorizes the superintendent to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion? I will move 5.5. A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.6, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the summer transportation contract with.
with Javaplay Transportation effective July 1st, 2019 to August 30th, 2019 in the amount of $175,164.81 and authorizes the board president and superintendent to execute this agreement. I will move 5.6. Is there a mistake there? Is there a mistake there? Should it be August 30th, 2020? Should it be August 30th, 2020?
No. No.
This is for the summer. This is for the summer. Just the summer. Just the summer. Okay. Okay. A second? A second? Any discussion? Any discussion? Sorry if you say summer transportation. Sorry if you say summer transportation. All in favor? All in favor?
All right. All right.